Bob?
Yeah, I got, I had to check with the coordinator here where she gave me a thumbs up. So I think we're good. I think we're spot on 3:30. So I'll turn it over to President Weed to begin the
Good.
session.
Good afternoon and welcome to our, our special board meeting of, is it February 3rd, 2021? And I think that's all I'm going to say. It's time for Dr. Maxwell to leave. Okay. Dr. Maxwell is going to present the updated restart plan.
Sorry, I had to change the light settings. So it wasn't as washing everybody out on the screen. So
No problemo.
Thank you very much for this opportunity and this time. So I'm really happy to communicate that our COVID level in our areas now in the moderate range, which on our stages of reopening, that would be phase four. So I'll be giving you an update tonight regarding plans moving forward with elementary, K5, middle school and high school. Before I get into the specific details though, I want to give the opportunity to Justin Polstad, principal at Pullman High School, and Cameron Grove, principal at Lincoln Middle School. They've been working with their teams on a schedule for hybrid. So I thought it'd be appropriate to start with each of them presenting what they've been working on with their staff. Yeah, I can tell you, they have put in a tremendous amount of work and thought and creativity. And I couldn't be any happier with the, the plans that they've come up with. So they will present first and then I will go into an update regarding our stages of reopening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Justin Polstad, principal of Pullman High School.
Thank you, Bob. Good to see everyone this afternoon. Real quick, just to piggyback on what Bob said there, our team has put in a lot of time focused on this. So I want to thank our department team leaders. We've got 10 of those folks that have worked incredibly hard to try to come up with, with the best schedule we can to serve our school at this time. And so just jumping in real quick here, if I can share my screen. Courtney, if you could give me a screenshot, that would be great.
Try it again, Justin. I think she just clicked the
There we go. Perfect. Okay, can everybody see that? Okay. So you know, with all the work that our staff has done, we, we come to, it came to conclusion that there really is not a, a perfect schedule for our students and staff with what we're facing right now. However, we do believe that our proposed schedule will work because of its foundation. The foundation of our schedule is built upon things that we've already been, been doing this year that have proven to work. And, and number one is, is relationships. Now, this year has proven again that relationships matter. Even from a distance, they still matter. And our staff has made connections with students and it's been made clear from the majority of our staff and from our families, that whatever schedule we came up with, whatever it looks like to finish this year, keeping students with their current teachers in their current classes was of such high importance. And not only for our in-person learners, but also for our distant learners. Okay. So we did not want, with this schedule, we did not want our students that, that choose to go distance. We don't want them to feel left out or set aside. Their contribution to class matters. And this schedule will allow for everyone, distance or in person, to stay connected with their current teacher and be a part of their class. And that's a huge piece for us. I think that's at the secondary level total. Another factor for us that kind of was a foundation for building our, our schedules was something that we, we've heard from, from families and teachers, but also something we've seen at other districts. And having the students zoom in and watch their classes for six hours a day when they're at home, on their, on their off day, should be avoided if at all possible. And, and our schedule avoids six hours of, a day of streaming class. So those are two really important things. And, and lastly, you know, this is a secondary effort. We have, we have teachers that work at both the high school and the middle school. And so having a similar schedule between LMS and PHS was necessary to make things work between both buildings. And so there was a lot of compromise that had to go in there between both buildings to, to make this work as best we can for everyone. So I'll show you a schedule here now. For most folks, when they see it, you kind of step back a little bit because there's, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of action here. So this, this is our, our schedule one is our hybrid schedule. This is for students that would fall in, in the category of hybrid A.
And I'll show you Justin, could you make that, could you make, excuse me, Justin, I'm sorry. Could you make that bigger by any chance?
I believe I can.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, 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 you're totally fine.
By the way, while, while I'm here and Justin's doing that, just to let you know, it, it, there was a lot of, a lot of compromise. And, and it was great to be able to work with Justin and their leadership team as well. My folks here, it, it was really exciting to see a couple of teams come together and do something very similar for our kids.
Thank you. That's perfect. Thank you, Cameron.
Is that a little too, a little too much then?
No, that's great.
Okay. Okay. I can scroll down this a little bit as well. And so one thing that's helpful to look at here with this, with this schedule is that here, let's do this. There we go. That makes it a little bit cleaner for us. Is that our, our, our key up above. So for our high school students in group A, we have students that would be in person would be blue for synchronous at home. So that's when their teacher's teaching a lesson to, to everyone is the darker gray. And then the asynchronous learning where an assignment has been given, but I'm working on it at home is, is the lighter gray. And so a student in this category would go to, go to school, come to PHS on Monday and Thursday. So we'd give them two days to be in the building. And then they'd have some asynchronous and synchronous work on those other days. Okay. But nothing where they'd have to live stream in all day. We wanted to avoid that for sure. The schedule also allows us to keep, like I said earlier, our, our students with their current teachers because again, we're not looking to, obviously we're past semester, the start of semester two, so we're not transitioning at a semester. We're going to transition somewhere in mid semester. And so to do that with different teachers would be incredibly difficult on our master schedule. And as we heard from families and students, incredibly difficult for them as well. So I will go to our next schedules. This was for students that would be in schedule A, hybrid A. Our next one is hybrid B. And it's a little bit flipped. So we had students in A that come in on Monday and Thursday. Students in hybrid B will come in on Tuesday and Friday. But with similar on their, on their other days, look very similar with the synchronous and asynchronous learning. Okay. And then for our students that choose to stay distance, again, we'll have the same teachers and same classes as they have right now. But we'll have asynchronous learning in the morning on a Monday, Tuesday. Synchronous learning in the afternoon where they're, they're, they're in, in class with their, with their peers and their teacher in the afternoon on Monday and Tuesday. And then again, 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 in the morning on Thursday and Friday. And so those are our three schedules because really we have three groups. We have the A group, the B group, and our, and our distance group. And, and we want to get schedules that would work for all of our students as best we could. Any questions with any of those before Cameron jumps in?
Justin, I saw that it was based on names, last names
Yeah.
on the heading.
Yeah.
Is that the way they are now? The way they're scheduled? But it says hybrid A is for the last names A through K.
Correct. Yeah. So we're not, because we're not divided up right now, everyone is just online right now.
Be able to be in person, right?
Yeah.
To be able to be in person.
When we come back, for, for these students that come back in person, we can only bring in half at a time. And so the half is the, is the A through K would come on Monday through, Monday and Thursday. And then the L through Z would come in on, on Tuesday and Friday.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Kim here.
Yeah.
You mentioned that there are some teachers that are doing double duty. They switch from LMS to PHS and vice versa.
Yeah.
Can you tell us approximately how many are doing that?
Yeah. So we have three teachers that we share between buildings. And, and most of it is a, is a zero period, first period type of thing. Well, they'll, they'll teach at the middle school, maybe zero period. And then they'll, they'll come up to the high school to teach the rest of their day. Or vice versa. Catherine Colville starts here at the, at the high school in the morning with orchestra and then finishes her day at Lincoln. And so very beneficial for our schedules to line up.
Right.
Yeah.
For those, for those students.
That's very, very conciliatory. Thank you.
Yeah. And honestly, it was with the high school. We were really trying to get very creative. We got to a point to where we said, you know, what's important for our kids, especially in those three classes, to be able to be in sync. So again, thanks to Justin and his team.
Thank you, Bob.
Allison, did you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry, Amanda. Please.
Okay, just real quick, um, for Justin and Cameron, on the synchronous learning days for the students that are at home, will they basically be watching their teacher teaching to the children, to the kids who are at school?
Good, good question. That's what we're working to avoid. So we want them to be involved, just as they are now. Right at home right now, I might, I may be zooming into my class, but it's not just me watching. There's, you know, at the high school, we're, we're using Perdeck. We're using interactive formats for us to have our students be involved. So the idea is not for them to just watch class happen, but to be a part of it, still interact, still be in, in groups. We can do that as well. Still be a part of the class, not just, not just watching it from afar.
And Amanda, you're, you're really getting into the nitty gritty there because that's really what's important, right? Because when we have, let's say, half of our class here in a group A or group B, the students who are at home, whether they're a distance learner, it's possible they could be sick at home and be, be able to jump into that classroom. That, that's going to be the uniqueness of this. And, and really what I was going to bring up at the end of my really short presentation is the idea of, man, we, we, we honestly have the talented staff to be able to do this. And, and today we're working out some kinks on trying to figure out, okay, how do you get that student at home involved? Just like they would be currently. And like I said, talented staff to be able to do it. We're pretty lucky.
We are indeed. Allison, did you have a question? Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Any other questions from Justin? Thank you, Justin. Fascinating.
All right.
Doing your puzzle.
All right, guys, I'm gonna
Doing your puzzle. Yeah.
Oh, yes. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And, and really the, the premise and the basis of it is exactly the same. It just looks a little bit different. Thumbs up if you can see it. Okay. Great. Hey, you know, at least for us, you know, being at the middle level, we see things sometimes a little bit differently, as you may imagine. For us, we, we'll see things in grade levels, right? And you know, with the current space that we have in our building and so on, we have three different lunches that we're going to run through here. So let me give you an example of Monday. So we'll tell you a here in group A, group A will be here in our building all day long. They'll be running through their seven class periods. What the green highlights here, and then you'll notice here at the top, that's the students who are in distance and the students who are in person. So when we have that green there, that's showing if you're at home, learning, doing live learning at your house, that's when you're going to be doing the live learning. So on our first day, Monday, that live learning for our distance students will be fourth, fifth, sixth and seventh. They'll be in those same classrooms, but at a distance as group A is. Group B is doing their asynchronous work at home. Whereas the next day it flips. Group A is at home doing their asynchronous work and group B is here all day. Whereas our distance students then will be getting periods one, two and three. And we say here livestream, but really in, with live learning for their classes. And you notice how we toggled that a little bit. One of our things right now is where our live classes are going only in the afternoon, right? We're getting extra support and doing asynchronous things at home currently in the morning. We flop this to be able to say, hey, listen, even if you're at a distance, you're going to do your morning classes in the morning. So from eight, 25 to nine, 10. So it's that idea of, boy, it, it's been since March since we've had to do things a certain way. I, I think this is going to work really well for our families of getting students back into a routine of, of getting up at a certain time and, and ensuring that, hey, we're, it's time to do school. So that's how we're setting it up. And you'll notice we cut, we flop everything on a Thursday and Friday. But it gives you an idea of what groups A, groups B and distance, when they're doing live classes. You'll also notice with the green, our, our students at a distance are receiving the two days of live learning, just as the persons who are coming in building. It's kind of thinking that equitable piece, right? Just ensuring that they're getting two days of live learning. We'd love five, but we'll take two, right? And so now that we're doing that, it just makes sure that, that the kids who are coming in two days, it just looks different than the students who are at home doing a distance. It just looks a little bit different because they're doing that live learning on different days. Here's our sixth grade schedule and you notice how things change a little bit slightly. A lot of it's just based upon lunches and when students will be eating lunches here in the building. There's our six, seven and eight. And we've even put it to a point here to where if I'm a student who's on an A schedule in the sixth grade, here's my schedule. Same with seventh. And then here at the bottom with eight. One of the things I did want to show you is that within this current schedule, and we'll look at the sixth grade schedule here, our students who are at a distance actually see both sides of the classroom, group A and group B. Remember, they were in the same class altogether. And so we have our distance students being in the same class as students who are in group A. And then at the end of the week, they'll be in the same class as students who are in group B, all of who are in the same individual class currently. To let you know, as I, as I, as I look at this, it takes a long while to actually go back and say, wow, how does this physically work? And we've been doing this for over a week, Justin, and I'm finally getting there, just to let you know. And we're working with our staff to be able to say, how does that look for me when I'm in the classroom, working with students at a distance and who are in front of me? I'm really excited to get that going because I, I know it's going to be amazing. Just working with folks today, I can already see it.
Thank you, Cameron. Any questions for Cameron? Somebody's got to have a question sometime. You want me to make one up for you, Cameron?
I mean, Susan, you normally would, but I'll take Jim's question.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Justin and Cameron, I'm assuming all the teachers are 150% behind this. So they're, they're what's making this work, I'm assuming.
Well, let me, let me tell you this. It's that idea of, and we're all kind of in this moment together, right? At first you see it and you go, oh my word, how am I going to do that? And you put amazing heads together and all of a sudden, great things will happen. I think you're going to find that here.
Okay. Call it the teachers' amazing heads. That's good. I assume you weren't talking about yourselves.
Trust me, that I, I, I am not in that group. So yes.
Oh, you have your moments, Cameron.
Every once in a while, Susan.
Are there any other questions of Cameron? All right. Well, Justin and Cameron, thank you so much for sharing. I don't know how you did this. I certainly hope it works as well as you think it will.
Thank you.
Great teacher leaders.
Thank you.
Oh, it might have something to do with the principals too, Cameron.
And we were there, we were helping.
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you. Anyway, exciting to see. Thank you. All right, Dr. Maxwell. There you go.
Oh, thank you. So, so I want to thank Cameron and Justin and their teams that have been working on these schedules. I also just want to point out a little bit regarding the technology. They have actually been testing different technology solutions the past week or so. And so the high school's been testing in some classrooms, kind of live streaming. I know in Lincoln Middle School yesterday and today, I believe they were testing some different mics, cameras set up so that students would just not be watching, but actually be able to participate. We could turn the camera to a small group so they could interact, just not watch. And so I want to let you know that we are working on testing out a lot of the technology beforehand. We'll also be putting together some professional development for our staff to, to help with this transition. But it's a, it's a really, really good plan. They've also worked extensively with other districts that have been in hybrid for many months. So they've kind of given us their expertise and what, what really worked well and what didn't work well. And so I just want to compliment the staff and the administrators that have been working on this plan. And I just wanted to let our audience know that we have been working on plans since last spring. And as you know, guidance continues to change and we've had to adapt our reopening plan many times. And sometimes what looks good on paper needs to be adjusted in the real world. So I want to, I want to just reiterate that point is we have been planning all along, but it's really hard to carry out, implement an educational program when the guidance changes as well or COVID rates change. But please be aware that we have been and continue to plan and implement learning for all of our students. And so I appreciate, I thought it's very important coming into this session that you can see the schedules at the middle school and high school and what they'll look like. So thank you again. Appreciate that. With that, I'd like to kind of transition into in just a minute and give you a visual on the stage for phase in plan. I'm calling this an update. I've been working with Whitman County Department of Health. We have come into the moderate COVID activity level. I think we were at 313. So that puts us in stage four. And I have shared this plan with the Whitman County Department of Health. And I'm kind of going to take you through some dates and just give you a little background information. So I'm going to ask Courtney to share on the screen. There we are. Can you see it, Susan?
No, it went away. It was there.
Just a second. We're working on it.
Ta-da. Don't move anybody and we'll be fine.
Okay, I think we're gonna, can you see the whole piece?
No, it needs to be. Not quite.
All right, hold on just a second. We're working on it.
No worries.
It's like riding on a roller coaster, Courtney.
Ryan, can we make this thing, I can't reach the thing down here.
Just a second. We'll, we'll work on the technical aspects of being able to show this and work through it.
There.
There we go. Thank you. All right. So the top just lets you know that we're now in stage four, moderate COVID activity level. Kind of references the plan that you adopted at our last board meeting with the revised metrics from the State Department of Health. I'm going to ask you to look under the stage for phase in plan update, the yellow border there. So February 1, grades K5 are in hybrid. February 22nd would be the next big movement where we're looking at grades K5 transitioning from two days a week to five days a week. Distance learning for those who are enrolled would continue as normal. This is the, the other big step in, on February 22nd, looking at grades 6/8 transitioning to hybrid in person, two days a week. And that refers to those schedules that Cameron referenced, the 6, 7, 8. So if those students are going to be staying on distance, that will be available. So we're in the process of sending out basically a survey and a form for our students and parents to select in-person or distance learning for middle and for high school. So March 1st would be a date that we are looking at for grades 9, 12, hybrid in person, two days a week. And that would follow the schedule that Justin presented. Again, both for the middle school and the high school, it would remain hybrid for the remainder of the year, two days a week. Why? It's because of the physical distancing of six feet. There's just no way that we can have all the students in person, five days a week, and meet the physical distancing guidelines. I want to say that also, again, according to the Department of Health, they kind of use that 200 number for high schools. So I do want to mention that. And that will still be in consultation with the Whitman County Department of Health. Those dates may be adjusted based on their guidance and recommendation. But right now, at least through grade 6, 8, we're in good shape. I want to just let you know, I appreciate, this has been reviewed with the PEA Association. Again, we've, we've talked about some of these dates and schedules. Safety and health protocols would continue to be maintained. And testing will continue to maintain. And testing will be expanded, especially the wastewater testing and monitoring. When middle school comes online, we'll expand that to the middle school. When high school comes back to hybrid, we'll expand that to the high school as well. We are still doing COVID testing and will continue to do COVID testing for students and staff as needed and requested. I also just want to point out at the bottom there, the vaccine, currently 34% of our staff have received the first vaccine inoculation and 13% have declined a vaccine inoculation. We will continue to try to obtain as many slots to get staff vaccinated. But I am encouraging staff to continue to reach out on their own. I want to jump to the other side and let's talk a little bit about sports clubs and activities. Those will follow the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association, WIIA League, and Department of Health safety guidance, practice timelines and competition seasons. I will let you know that those are also reliant upon a region's phase. We are currently in phase one, which basically means no competition, except for I think maybe girls swimming and cross country. All the safety guidelines will be followed for sports clubs and activities. So that's a real rough overview. A couple of other things that I just want to point out is that this phase in plan aligns with, again, school districts in both Whitman and Spokane County. We've been having extensive conversations with districts who have had secondary students back in since either September or later. We've learned a lot from their recommendations. And I believe this is, would be a very comprehensive phase in for our grade levels. I'm happy to take questions.
Um, Bob, it seems that the latest round of emails, there's a lot of concern on space for all the kids to keep their six foot of distance. Do you have any worries about that?
Well, you know, like any, any school in any district, that's always, we're looking at that six foot spacing. We are setting up classrooms, so we maintain those six foot spacing. It is tight in some grade levels and some classrooms, but we want to make sure we're maintaining that. We won't be putting any additional students in there that would lessen that six foot distance. that would lessen that six foot distance. So again, it's following the protocols, it's following the procedures. Our students, I can tell you, have been getting a lot of practice, coming in on an AB schedule thus far. I had an opportunity Monday to be out at Jefferson on the playground. And the zones are working well. The students know the zones and are rotating through the zones. And I think it's, will continue to be following those safety protocols. And the students are doing a great job and the staff are doing a great job.
Super. Thank you. Yeah. And thank you to all the staff. It, it takes a lot of cooperation to get this whole thing going. So I, I appreciate all staff working on this.
May I ask a question or two?
Yes.
First, thank you so much for confirming the Whitman County Health Department is still in it with us. I'm glad to hear they're still, you know, making recommendations and helped us through this. Because I know last, last meeting with us, a little in doubt. I have a plan. So I know the Health Department mentioned a plan for symptomatic students. You know, he was mentioning allergy seasons coming in. We have a plan for testing people who basically fail the attestation in the morning and can't come to school?
Yes, we do. Great question, Nathan. So currently, Michelle Hyatt, our lead nurse, she receives a report every morning of anyone who quote unquote did not pass the wellness screener or the attestation, as you mentioned. And she does a follow up with those, parents or staff members. If needed, she will reach out to them to do testing and contact tracing as well as needed. So we do have that procedure set up, and it's actually been operational for quite a, quite a while. Also, if a student appears symptomatic, she can do testing, go out to a school and do testing. Or if the student, maybe symptoms appear not when they're at school, but after school, she also has time set up at the district office where families can swing by and receive a COVID test.
Cool. Thank you. I, I know that he had, he had offered assistance. And so I was also wondering, do we have the adequate resources devoted to our nursing staff? I mean, I know we don't, you know, we're, we're not like flush with nurses. And so do we have enough bandwidth to take on all these extra students and the contact tracing and everything involved?
We are going to be working closely with Whitman County Department of Health to assist us with contact tracing if that becomes overwhelming. We do have a nursing physician posted. So if anyone is out there listening or interested, I'll make a plug that we can always use another nurse. So if you're interested, please check out our website. But Michelle works closely with the Department of Health. They have a call every Tuesday. And the Whitman County Department of Health has reached out to us if we do need a distant, additional assistance with testing or contact tracing as well.
Thank you, Bob. And I just had one more question. I appreciate the board's time. How do we, I, I've gotten some random, I don't want to say random, but, but individual complaints about violations to social distancing guidelines, staff members or students not following, you know, proper masking procedures or whatnot. What, what are we doing to ensure compliance amongst staff and students? I mean, given that we're going to, like, full-time elementary is going to double the size of the capacity of the building, et cetera, it's going to be even more important. I mean, I know all the research is always begun with, as long as people follow social distancing requirements. And so what are we doing to ensure compliance?
It's a great question. So we continue, we continue to remind and practice our protocols, and that's really important. I will say the staff have also come up with some very creative, time-saving ways to speed up hand washing while still making it safe for students. So we're, we're sharing tips and tricks regarding that. Building administrators are making sure that not only staff, but students, you know, are following the directions. A lot of times, our students will need a reminder, especially if their mask slips below their nose. That's pretty common. We also have invested in some child-sized face masks where a lot of times the students may, it may be an issue of the mask is too big. So I know that administrators are also working with families to find or supply better, better masks. But a lot of it's going to be on, just like in the public, helping each other and supporting each other to follow the rules and protocols, reminding ourselves to stay as much as possible six feet away. A lot of that is going to be dependent upon each individual's responsibility and, and role.
And Bob, there was some confusion on where to report incidences of violation. Could you clarify for staff and teachers and such, where, what they should do whenever they encounter someone who's violating social distancing requirements?
Yeah, if they're doing that, they can reach out to their building administrator first. And if they're not able to get ahold of them, please notify Michelle Hyatt, and we will work on that.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Bob, I have two questions. The first is in regard to, at our last meeting, you had mentioned some transportation bottlenecks and issues with these new plans coming forward from LMS and PHS and Full Time Elementary. Did we work out the transportation issues?
We did have a meeting today with Pullman City Transportation, so Pullman Transit. So we've, we did an initial survey a couple of weeks back regarding asking families if their middle school or high school would need transportation. So our real bottleneck is going to be within the city boundaries using Pullman Transit. We had a good meeting with them this morning. We've worked out some preliminary ideas. In order not to adjust the start time of school or move it back, I did receive some parent emails from my last comments at the board meeting about if that happened, they wouldn't be able to drop their students off on their way to work. So we were looking at maybe an earlier arrival and running two or three routes back to back. Because on Pullman Transit, they're only going to allow 10, 10 students on the bus at a time. So we'll need to run multiple. So they are working on some routes and ideas and timelines. And we're working on probably providing some additional supervision in the morning and afternoon. So students may get dropped off earlier and be supervised until school starts to eliminate having to basically upend a schedule for the middle school and high school.
My, my second question is in regard to parents. The constituent concerns I receive are primarily from LMS and PHS parents of students. In terms of why we're only going hybrid and not full-time, will that be adequately explained to the parents by a fact or something, as well as it was explained tonight to us?
Yeah, we can, we are going to work on an FAQ of facts and answer questions. But we, there, with the number of students that we have and the number of spaces and square footage, we will not be able to have students there all day, every day in a classroom with the numbers we have. We can do two days a week and an AB, but with the six foot distancing requirement, there's absolutely no way we can do five days a week at middle school or high school.
Hey, I thought it was explained very well tonight. I just wanted to make sure the parents understand.
Yeah, absolutely. And
Okay, all right.
Yeah, unless, unless that rule goes away, which I don't think it will for this year, we are going to be in a, in a hybrid. But as you saw earlier tonight, the staff and principals have really devised, I think, a, a great, a great schedule. And I will say, any, any district that's trying to do hybrid at the secondary level, any of them will tell you, it's, nothing's perfect. And they've tried just about every schedule combination you can imagine. But I think this is solid. I think it's least disruptive for the families and the students and the teachers. And we are doing all that we can to support and make this the best experience possible for the remainder of this year.
I applaud, I applaud the district. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Amanda or Allison? Oh, well, I'm excited, of course, to have our students being able to go back. Anything else you need to add, Dr. Maxwell?
I would just add that, you know, as anything, this is an update and a work in progress. So I'm, we're really solid on the February 22 date, the March 1. Could be a little, could may need to move back a week depending on case numbers and recommendation from Whitman County Department of Health. So I just want to, I want to make that clarification to folks. This is not set in concrete or stone. Things could move a little bit. So, so I just want to make that clarification perfectly clear that, especially for the high school, that date, that date could move a little bit back. It won't move forward, but it'll either happen on the first or it may happen a week later. But I just want to make that clear to our community and to our audience. And we are doing our best to get everything in, in order and ready to go. We have a lot of technology to get in and get set up. We've done a lot of testing, and I appreciate the staff who volunteered to test the different technologies to make this an engaging opportunity at a distance. So a lot of moving parts. I appreciate, I want to also just highlight the work that Robert has been doing with everything from specialists in music and classroom teachers and technology, and Wells Garen's group, and Joe for working on the transportation piece, which is very fluid and we're working on. It, it's going to be really hard to get everybody to, to school with only 10 people are on a city bus. But we're going to make it, we'll make it work somehow, some way. I'm confident.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? I think we all really appreciate the update and look forward to brighter days ahead, except for the dumb groundhog person didn't cooperate.
Well, we're, we're hoping for a really nice spring so we can have a lot of our students outside enjoying the nice weather and being able to learn a little bit outside with fresh air. So
Be so good. Great. I think that's it then. It is a special session.
Yep, that concludes my update for tonight.
And full speed ahead. Everybody use your, wear your masks, wash your hands, keep distance so we can carry on with this. Thank you.
And I will say, Susan, I want to thank the community for following those protocols because we are seeing those cases drop. We're not seeing a big spike in which we would have seen the previous weeks or even this week. We're not really seeing that. But again, I don't want to get lulled into a sense of security. We need to continue to wash hands, physically distance, even with a vaccine does not mean you're not going to catch COVID. So we're going to continue to work on trying to get our staff vaccinated. And I appreciate all the assistance from Whitman County Department of Health in making that happen up to this point. We've been very, very lucky. And we're going to continue with that. That's one of our goals. And so I appreciate the board's efforts and work as well. And appreciate all that you do for us to get us this far and get us to the, to the end of the year.
I'd also like to thank WSU for doing some of the testing.
Absolutely. And without their partnership, we would, we would be expending a lot of time and resources. So I do want to thank you, Jim. I didn't want to leave them out. I also want to recognize Pullman Regional Hospital, which has also done some of our COVID testing as well. So I appreciate it's been a community partnership and effort to make it to this point in the year. And we'll continue to work together till the end of the year to get this done.
Duper duper. Okay.
Joe.
On Robert's rules, do I need to have a motion to adjourn? It says it's a special meeting and we're done with the business. All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Summer.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. That we do adjourn our meeting today. And thank you all who tuned in and will adjourn briefly and then start our meeting with Cindy McMullin at 4:30.
That's right. So you get a little break and we'll see you at 4:30.
Okay, we didn't, I didn't have to ask anybody vote, so I'll, yeah.
Yep, got to vote, so.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we do adjourn our meeting. All those in favor, please signify with a thumbs up. Thank you all. We'll see you in about 14 minutes.